Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Call me the order. I do have a forum. I take a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes. Motion or second?
I'll second it.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close? Motion, Gary. Rich Brown, good morning.
Morning. Um, I emailed you folks last week about some options we have for projects and whatnot. I'll get a chance to look at that.
Yeah, look like numbers.
Yeah. Okay, so I tried to explain it in the email. I don't know if it made sense to you or not, but the options for if we want to do something or when we want to do something. Um, option one for the Highway 105 paving project. That's kind of where we're at right now is trying to figure out how we're what we're going to do funding wise. We could borrow ahead in our foreign market account to the extent of, um, I can't remember what the complete balances in there, but if we borrowed ahead to our three-year maximum, we would still need to come up with 1.7 million dollars to backfill the foreign market account, which we could use the, we could use TIF or we could use the 105 trust fund. But doing that with the foreign market fund means that every other project we have coming up is going to need some sort of borrowing to complete. Or pushing the projects back until we maybe have, but it's all, all we're doing is pushing the problem down. What it does do is gives us time to consider what we want to do as far as tipping for the next projects. If we get that far, it puts these online for next year. Even the next project itself wouldn't be a high dollar borrow, but as we get further down with these other projects, you know, we're going to be borrowing with these numbers off to the side. We could also advance some projects. If we decide to go this way, we could advance some projects. We want to, if you guys decide you want to maybe tip, say a larger amount to do some projects, we could do more projects in one or two construction seasons versus stretching it out over time. And then that gives the foreign market account time to build again. So that's kind of option one. And then option two was to, completely borrow for the 105 trust, for the 105 project with TIF and the 105 trust fund. That would take care of the 105 trust fund, but it also would, we'd only have a small amount then, probably around the same amount to borrow each one, maybe one point. I guess I did break down the number. Think, what'd you say, Jack? It was 1.7 in the trust fund. So the remaining 3.8, and that just depends, like I said, on, on whether the bids come in good or favorable or whatever. But figure 2 million, 2.1 million out of TIF and 1.7 of the trust fund gives us a 3.8 estimated. And then the, the foreign market account can continue to build up and through fiscal 24, we might need to shove some projects around again for borrowing or create by then a larger, a larger TIF to do projects. Or, you know, it buys us a little time to borrow everything right now, but it all, either way, we can look at, I guess I just need some direction. If I go with the foreign market account option, where we borrow three years ahead, that means I've got to pull a project from the March letting, change the project number to a foreign market project. And then they go through this whole paperwork process. I wouldn't get it in until probably the May letting versus the March. So.
And what would you get in May versus March? Wouldn't there be a worse bid probably because they're already?
Busy.
Yeah.
Because people have already got stuff booked up.
Well, I mean, that's another thing to consider is if we push it back two months, there's a possibility that the, the numbers wouldn't be as great as March. But after talking to the association a little bit, there's not a whole lot of concrete paving out there. Now, we could be very lenient and say, okay, we want to let it now, bid it now. And you can do it either build it this year or you can build it next year as far as, you know, having a contract out there. That gives them some flexibility to decide whether they can try to squeeze it in this year, next year. That might give us some better pricing, but.
And, and give us time to get the TIF done. That's in a row.
Right.
Right.
Because one way or the other, you're going to have the money. It's just how we're doing.
Right.
So, just a question here. Looking at this funds, the funds option or FM funds option or page here.
Yep. You're looking at option one, correct? That's underneath the title. It says.
Option two, actually. I was looking at there. I better bring up option one.
Which one do you want? Which one do you want to?
Well, no, what am I curious is, is I'm just asking you a question here is you, you've got it laid out over roughly a five-year, six-year projection of the projects we're going to be doing. And 105 West is on there in the top, of course. What's the, 105 East is not listed anywhere. What's your thought on that? And where's that on the west? Because it's, right now, I understand it's winter, but that stretch of road is pretty rough too.
And I'm looking at.
Well, with the Deer Creek wind turbine project, there was some extra traffic, some extra wear and tear.
So, because we have a, we haven't finalized our five-year program yet. What I was looking at was what we have for, and a lot of these roads you'll see are asphalt roads that are deteriorating rather rapidly. So.
Right.
I mean, I can throw the 105 East in here somewhere. It's going to change a lot of things, but right now, I guess it's not in the five-year plan. However, each year that five-year plan changes. If you want me to put it in there and estimate something, I can certainly put it in there. I just don't know what year we want. But at the same stretch, if you guys want to TIF a large amount like we did back in 2009, 2010, we can put more projects together and then bundle.
Well, some of this kind of plays into depending on what happens for projects in the counties where it's true and solar and most good things.
And when I was programming everything, I'm looking at what we have for money locally and, and foreign market and trying to hit some of these other ones that probably won't even make it as long as I have them, you know? I don't even know if, if Warbler and 390th will make it out to fiscal 24 without needing some major work.
Right.
105 is a concrete road yet, and I know it's rough. I know it needs some work, but I guess it's just a matter of where, where do we want to prioritize everything?
Right.
Well, if I don't have the money for it, I just, I don't program it until I know that there's something.
Rough, rough versus disintegrating are two different.
Well, right. I mean, and, and I know that that one's not in the best of shape either. I mean, we did some patching on it, try to alleviate some of those issues. It just, it's, it's a, it's a story here of how much we have, what we need to do and how much money we have that we can do.
Well, it's, the problem is we have to get that all figured out too at the same time. You have to figure things out, so.
I guess right now, I'm just, right now, I'm looking.
To have a TIF list and figure out what, what we have to identify the projects to be able to know where the money is going to go.
So, I mean, I think we need to figure out how to get the 105 project at least on the west.
And that's where this is right now. It's the same. Let's, let's figure out how 105 is going to go and what our plans are for the future as far as. If you guys are, if you guys are looking at, at tipping project, tipping for road projects, we can do a lot more. You know, this is just kind of giving them the summary of where we need to tip. Now, the foreign market fund is still involved in some of this through this whole table that I put out here. It's just a matter of, we get $750,000 a year in foreign market money. That's not a lot of money. It takes a long time to build that up. So we're going to have to look at other alternatives for, for backfilling any of our projects.
Do we have a timeframe when we have to use that money from?
The foreign market account? We can build up to three years worth, and right now, we aren't even close. We're still, we're still negative.
Borrow ahead.
We can borrow ahead up to three years and we can, we can, we can retain up to three years. So I mean, we can have a. Yeah, it's plus or minus three years and we can, you know, that's a six-year spread. So six times seven is, you know, whatever, 4.2 million, right?
Right.
So, but that's spread out that far, but whether we wait three, I mean, we've never been able to wait that long because we've always had projects that need to be completed.
So the theory is we'll probably never run out of it, never run into an issue where you're not using that foreign market money at some point, either borrowing ahead or, or savings. Because there's always a road in, always a road in need of something. So.
By the looks of it, there's more than one.
Oh, there's more than one. Then this winter will, you know, open up some more stuff.
Right now, the project is set for option one.
Okay.
Well, no, yeah.
Gotcha.
No, it's set for option two where it's all local money.
Right.
And so if we continue on option two, I just need to know whether we're going to use the 105 trust fund and whether or not we're going to have TIF funds to backfill the project to complete it.
Well, we should have TIF funds. It's just a matter of getting them, getting it all lined up. Just, you know.
And bidding it in March, um, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to guess. I know when a contractor is coming in, but, you know, we'll still have, if we let it in March, it'll be April before contracts are done. I don't know what other companies have for schedules or anything, but it could, it could go in starting from May until, you know, August when they start. But I don't know what the timeline is for TIF. I mean, we do have funds in the 105 trust fund. If the contractor decided to come in early and, and start working, we could have some funds for them to pay, but we want to make sure we have the money for them. And as long as, you know, I don't know if we can get stuff done and, and commit to, to TIF by June 31st or whatever. See, it all depends on how money comes flowing out when it comes to a local project. If they're not going to start till August, then we've got time to figure out TIF and everything else. If they start in May, who know, you know, if they start in May, they'll be done by June, late June, maybe. So we've got all this funding coming out at one time. So it's just a matter of trying to figure out where they're going to stage it. So I guess, is there a commitment from the board to borrow for this project? And if so, I don't know how long that process takes to get paperwork done and things like that.
Oh, it's government, so I'm sure it's a month, if not two. I, you know, when it comes to the TIF anyways, you're borrowing anyways and then paying back, you just got to have that project, particular project identified.
My, right. And my biggest concern is making sure that if the contractor comes before, if the contractor comes and we don't have the TIF part figured out yet, how are we going to pay for it? Right now, we have the 105 trust fund and we do have the secondary road fund. But depending on how that goes, I think it would probably be best if they started the project in the spring to pay with 105 trust fund first. And if that gets us to fiscal year 22 and we still don't have TIF figured out, we still have the secondary road fund to backfill until the TIF comes in the, you know, there's, this is just a crazy, crazy situation.
But will they even get to it? It's all guessing.
Yeah. What's that?
If they'd even get to it or not.
By, by in the spring or if it could become like a July or August.
If it becomes a July or August, we've got time then to figure the TIF out and have the funding available. It's just, that, that's that timeline here. But I guess, I, I guess what I want is.
Well, and do you remember what happened with TIF last time? Did you already have a project in the hot girl when you were trying to figure all this stuff out?
I think what happened, and I wasn't here for that when it started, was I think the board said, hey, we're going to, we're going to tip $10 million. Give us a list of projects. And then we just came up with projects that fit the bill. And then that was it. We're kind of.
Because you're getting one ahead of the gun, basically.
Well, I'm just telling you what our needs are.
We have a need here and I mean. Unfortunately. I mean, not that it couldn't live by, but I mean, it's just, it's going to get, it's not going to get any better.
Right.
Well, and maybe with, um, the help of financial advisor, we, you know, like you said, take down the trust fund for now, maybe replenish it with, with debt in the future.
I mean, we could put it, put it back once we get everything lined up, correct?
Yeah. I mean, you guys do everything on the trust fund. You can bury it. You can, you can use it all and never replenish it again.
I don't think that's.
Or you can, or you can say, okay, we're going to use this fund along with TIF. Or maybe we use the fund and you guys want to tip 100% of 105 and then take some of that funding. I didn't, maybe that's not a good idea to, to borrow money to put back into an, I don't know.
They used it last time and paid it back over time.
Did they pay it back with TIF?
Yeah, technically.
I mean, would it make sense to be, to borrow money to put back into an account? Maybe, I don't.
Because there was like a million something that was, was put back into that. I'd have to look for sure, but it, it was.
I know it's become a pretty good slush fund for people that are in need, which is fine. Right.
Well, and they, even if we, if it's 1.7, let's take it down to 1.9, take that 700,000, put it towards a different road. Or that project, or if there's something else that needs to come up in the spring with some paving, you had to do a three-mile stretch, go do a three-mile stretch, you know, or.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I completely get that. I guess what I want to know is, do we want to keep it local and borrow the money? Or do we want me to try to do this foreign market thing, get into a May letting now? Keep it local?
I think you, I think you want to stay with a March letting or you're going to.
Oh, I know, I know. I know where I want to be. I just want.
They're not going to know what's going on until we get to March letting to find out what the bid is.
And hopefully your, and hopefully your numbers are high.
Do it. Do we? That gets.
Once you let it.
Once you let it, you better have a good reason why you're not going to award it.
But we have an idea of where we're going to juggle funds from.
Well, just of all of a sudden, you're, you're coming in telling us 5 million, it comes in at six.
Well, if I'm telling you it comes in at 3.8 and it comes in at, at five, we're going to say, no, I mean, there's a certain percentage of, if it, if, if I'm estimating 3.8 million, it comes at 3.8 million.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I get that. But I said, you guys make 3.8 and then all of a sudden we're coming at five.
Is there a percentage that you can just say?
I think there's, I have to look at the DOT requirements again. I think there's, depending on how many bidders you have and how much above the engineer's estimate it is, there's a percentage where you can, you can work through that, but.
Because you've held off before.
That was the bridge project that we did where we didn't award it because Mark might remember that. But it's the one where we, the one where it came in really high and we wanted the back. We didn't want to award it because we want, it was a timing thing. And then when we relet it, we actually did find some, we actually did get a better number. It just was to the point where we don't want to let it three times. And it was probably the best number we were going to get. So we've done it before, but you have to have a really good reason why you're not going to award the project. And usually it's got to be, I don't know if it's 20% above the engineer's estimate where you can start looking at that. I don't think I've, I don't think that the estimate I have is going to be low. I think they're going to hit that, that number. But that all depends on what the market's doing in March, you know?
If they're hungry in March or if they're already full.
Right. And I looked at the last, the last, the February letting, which is I think today, there's not a lot of large concrete projects. There's a lot of small municipal things that a lot of these smaller paving contractors usually get. Not a lot of county, large county work. That's, I don't think there's really anything much that's larger than a mile or maybe a couple miles. But if it's a couple of miles, it's in town somewhere in the bigger cities. So I guess if we're going to leave it local, then I'll leave everything alone. And we'll just work on finding ways to pay for it.
I think that's what we, that's my opinion.
Yeah, it's, I mean, we know we got to do something that's unfortunately if, we're not, yeah, figured out because we don't really want to start pushing other projects back.
No, we're just keep digging a hole. And we've already done that on some stuff, bridges and things, you know?
The other thing too is you can dig the hole and then we'll have more time to figure out TIF. But if I dig the hole now, that means I got to put it off in May to change products. And I was, I was a little bit frustrated with the DOT when they told me I couldn't get into the April letting because all I'm doing is changing project number. But what it does, they have to, because it's state money versus local money, all they're doing is letting the project for us. But when you start using foreign market funds, then they've got to go through their contractual things to, there's paperwork involved with contracts then.
We just need to identify the steps on getting this TIF going. And just, Jeff, I'll could help with that a little bit and make a couple of other people make some calls and try to get this going, I guess.
So as I understand it, we're going to leave it local and we're going to.
We'll figure it out. And then if we want to use some of that 105 trust, we use it.
We still have time to quote the project. We'll keep, we'll, we'll revisit this. We've got until, I don't want to say the day before the letting, but that's technically how long we have until.
The week before.
Well, it'd be nice to be, or if we're going to do some.
In two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the March letting is still going to be a month from, spring is around the corner too. Their monthly letting, so we've got, you know, a few weeks. So, um, the other thing that came through recently, we've heard about this COVID, this funding, this backfilling funding from the feds. They call it uh, the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021, where the federal government's going to give 1.21, 121.9 million to the state of Iowa for COVID backfilling. What the, uh, the planning, programming and modal division is doing is, is requesting that, that funding, all that money coming into the transportation side of the state gets distributed as if it were regular road use tax money. So what they would say is the DOT gets 47.5% of that fund, the county gets 32.5 and the city gets 20%. And then they'll break down the allocations to the cities and counties based on the road use tax formulas that we've been using so far, just as an update. So what it's estimating us to get for Worth County is, and they want to distribute this, if it was money for the secondary road fund, it would come in like a regular road use tax money does every month. They'll write a check to us for our road use tax. And there's going to, they'll put some to farm to market and there's a percentage in there too. Um, it breaks down to, um, out of, out of the, out of the 32.5%, the county receives 24.5% would be secondary road fund money that would get deposited to our local budget. And then 8% goes to the farm market fund. What we would possibly see if they did that was we could see $195,000 in our secondary road fund and 62,000, 63,000 in the farm market fund. Not a lot of money, but it's, so.
I'd take 200,000 if you handed it to me, Rich.
I would too.
So in the scheme of the total, yeah, it doesn't seem like.
I mean, if you want to look at it from a different standpoint, that money isn't enough to buy a, a fully loaded dump truck. So I mean, but it's, it's money for, we can, you know, it's money for patching. It's just, it helps the, it, it's supposed to backfill what we theoretically may have lost in the road use tax fund because of COVID.
Right.
And when, in all actuality, the, there's in this letter too, there's, there's the short funds that they were talking about. I think you guys probably were ed, or advised on that. Maybe at your meetings that you guys have had over on Zoom or whatever with your colleagues about the shortfalls and whatnot. I can't remember where it is in this letter now where they were projected shortfalls.
Like 50 million?
Yeah, there's a $50 million shortfall, but now we're getting 121.9 million. But see what the state's going to do, because this is federal money. If this was federal money and we didn't have the swap program going on, they probably want us to put a project together and use these funds as federal money. But the state's going to say, hey, look, we're going to take all this federal money. We're going to use all this federal money on our projects. We're going to give you a one-to-one exchange, swap it out and give you guys, it gets money in our hands quicker, which no strings attached. We don't have to have a match, anything like that. So it's a really good deal for us. We get the money faster. And so we'll just seal the, everything shakes out in the end.
Move the show.
So much.
It helps.
So, one final thing. The state of Iowa is going to do a shouldering project from Olmsted to Glass Avenue on Highway nine. They're using H-SIP funds, which is highway safety improvement funds. They want to know if as part of that project, we want to pave our gravel road intersections like we've been doing. I thought I'd ask you guys first. Consider about, it's about, has an estimate $5,000 per, per intersection per side. And we have about six of them. So we're looking at about $30,000 to get the intersections cleaned up. The one thing I like about it is that, uh, our motor graders don't have to get on the highway to do our regular rock maintenance in the, in the summertime. They can, I mean, I'd say they won't be on it, but when they pick up and they're trying to feather things out, they don't have their motor grader sticking out through the center line of Highway nine to clean the intersection or anything else. So. I like it. I like the idea just on a safety standpoint of keeping the machines out. It's $30,000 estimated. But we've already got, we've already got, uh, we don't have the bill yet for the one where they're going to do here from fertile to I-35 yet. But that was estimated at $27,000. So.
I have a couple of points on that over the years.
Well, with being out and, and that's the part where the, the rock gets worn out the most is at those intersections because you got turning traffic and things like that.
And you always, you always generate those soft spots because of salt and stuff coming off the highway.
So.
Leaching onto it. So then that first 200 feet, you're always rocking them early because there's mud.
Right.
So that would.
I like the idea. I thought I'd be in, we're talking about.
You're not going to get it any cheaper.
No.
No.
And it's nice to have a contractor there to do it. So if you guys are okay with it, I'll tell the DOT that we're okay with it. You're in Worth County to do it. I'll discuss with Worth County later.
So from Olmsted to Glass are going that way?
Yeah, I don't know why they're, why it's a certain stretch there, why they're paving shoulders unless they have issues.
Budget probably.
Well, it's just kind of a weird stretch of road where.
Glass is the black dog goes south, right?
Yeah, the road road, yep. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's just an odd place to start.
I, it's, yeah, I don't know. I guess I've never paid attention to their right of way, if their shoulders are narrower there or what the situation is when you get from Olmsted.
So that'd be Olmsted's Rock Falls, right?
Oh, no, no, it's fine. Yeah. Olmsted is a.
Just a gravel.
Yeah.
I didn't even know we had Olmsted, so.
So.
Did you?
No. Me, I just got to get over the east side of the county.
I know that way, but I really don't want to get the roads that way.
So. I think that's all I've got for you to think about this week and let you know what I've got going on. So.
Only question, we're talking about TIF funds here and using the possibility of bridges.
Yeah.
But you got, you have a priority list on those? I mean, same, or same situation?
Right now with the bridges, what I've got programmed is what I've, I've got programmed for and I, I didn't turn out the key.
Is that just the roads or is that bridges?
That's everything and that's subject to change. So that's just what I gave you guys.
Bridge map in here somewhere, but.
Yeah, there's a bridge map up here. That's, I got to update that too with postings, but that, that's the map I gave you guys for the county budget.
Right.
And that's how it sits right now, but before.
Except for 105.
Except for 105.
105 should be.
It's on there.
Do you stand west?
Not east.
It's under FM.
It says, if it says L.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't have it highlighted with a color.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. That's, that's 22's map. So this is still 21 we're talking about. So it's not going to be on there.
Okay.
But that map is subject to change until April 15th and we'll have things dialed in better, but.
All right.
I'll, I, if you want me to, I'll evaluate 105 East and see if I can put it in the five-year plan too. But I think right now, I don't think it's going to really matter at this point in time. The main thing is to figure out 105 West. And if I, I can, I guess I got time to put it in the program somewhere so we can evaluate what we want done to it.
Well, it's not going to get any better going east either.
No, no, but I just, like I said, I'm only pro, I was only programming what we have money for. And if we're going to tip, I can, I can probably stack it a little bit. If we're going to, if we're thinking about borrowing money for road projects, I can add that project in there.
So is East a lower priority than this?
Yeah, than the rest of it. That's the next question.
You tell me. I mean, it depends on if you're driving it or not. Yeah, it's a, it's a concrete road. It's rough. It's not deteriorating as fast as some of these asphalt roads are. The asphalt's only going to last for so long before it really deteriorates.
Right.
I can put together an estimate for probably maybe a crack in seat and an asphalt overlay out there. There's, there's a lot of different ways to handle that road, but if we want to look at, I'll just, it'll take some time to evaluate it, but.
Yeah, I just, it's just a question.
Well, it's still going to be on the priority side, I guess.
It won't be done, it won't be done this season. So I got some time, we got some time to fit it into the plan.
So, you know, if we did do a TIF type deal, that would probably be a priority.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely.
Maybe we can move a couple of these others up.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Or grab a couple of bridge projects that we need to.
That's exactly. We know we're going to, if you guys know that once these are online and we're going to, if you guys want to borrow money, we can come up with a bunch of projects that can fit the bill to take care of that too. And what it does for us is having that TIF, whether people agree or not agree about TIF, what it does is it helps our, our state funding balances and our, you know, to do other projects in the future. Here's the thing, I think we're at, we're at where we could have been in 2009 had we not had TIF. We're, we're talking about how we're going to pay for projects now where we've had 10, 11 years where TIF has gotten us to where we are now. We would have been talking about this 10 years ago if it not been for TIF.
Right.
And then we'd be talking about where are we going to borrow the money from instead of, are we going to tip it, you know? So we're just, we're just, we just kicked the can down the road a few years with what we did 10 years ago. And now we're, we're, we're at where everybody else used to be. So.
Somebody long before we all got on board paved all these roads and now we got to take care of them.
Yeah, so.
Yep, that too.
I won't even bring up.
That's not a question, well, we just have to pay that.
I won't even bring up putting roads to gravel because that's not a good idea. But it is, you know, the reality is it takes money to maintain these things and they're not going to last forever.
We have a lot of hard surface roads for.
We do have a lot of hard surface roads for our population.
Yeah, no, no, they're pretty good. They're, they're, they're going to need some attention, so.
If the guy live in town, he has one up to pave mine.
Any other concerns, comments, questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Thanks.
Oh, thank God. Anything, Rich?
Yep, I'm going to go zoom my Mitchell County meeting.
All right, thank you. Clean or drainage. So we had some clean standparks. Do we have any questions or concerns over these?
I didn't.
I didn't.
I'll second the motion to approve the drainage cleaning.
Standparks, sorry, motion to approve standparks. So, second?
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor, aye? All right, both? Uh, regular claims, nothing? Right, no specials, nothing? See, reports? $1820. Motion to approve the reports.
Make a motion to approve the reports.
All right, there's a motion to second. All favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? We never turn down a money comes in.
Why do they?
All right, they want eligibility seller changes?
Nope.
Vehicle license?
Nope.
Maneuver management plan?
Yeah, I passed that one to you, Norski three.
Norski three.
So.
Yep, really?
Yeah.
Uh, didn't like that gaining change, just a.
Just a rotational.
Crop rotation, right?
Yes, one of them I saw check.
Yep.
So I will make a motion to acknowledge the maneuver management plan for Norski, whatever it was.
Norski number three. And there's a motion to acknowledge a new management plans, or second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I.
Both. Alright, motion carry.
Yeah, we have another addendum to law enforcement for the city of Joyce.
Okay, Joyce, ready to pay their portion? Battles and mallets.
I'll make a motion to accept the law enforcement agreement.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, any other discussion? That's three of them now, right? All in favor I?
Alright.
I, both. Motion will carry. Resolution twenty twenty-one dot oh two dot sixteen, putting articles of agreement. Uh, creating the Shell Rock River watershed management coalition. Um, this is the newly formed coalition, basically just to work for the future with. Any watershed, the Shell Rock River, since it runs through the entire county, that's probably a good idea that we join this. Um, it's kind of been head up by uh, the city of Shell Rock and Butler County. Um, and you guys saw the twenty-eighty agreement?
I did read through it, my only question is, is there any funding requirements?
No, as of now, no.
I didn't, it looked that way, but it was.
Nope.
Read through it all.
Nope, everything thus far is nothing, it's just uh. Uh, but like Cedar Watershed, just we're part of a group that.
Right.
Maintain, so if there ever becomes such a issue with it, then we've already kind of got that formed, then we can go to work.
Probably end up being female if anything did happen.
Yeah. But Jeff, Jeff was looking over, said it was fine as far as the agreement went, so.
So basically, there's this resolution that um. Says why we need it and popularizes you on need to sign it, basically.
Been a long read, so.
Yeah.
So I will make a motion to accept the resolution for this Shell Rock River watershed management coalition.
Alright, there's a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dot oh two dot sixteen, is there a second?
I second that motion.
Any other discussion? We'll roll call votes, maybe?
Aye.
Lowberg?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Resolution will pass. And we will sign our twenty-eighty with them. Um, and while we're, we'll do that in the appointment, so it's down here.
Do I email that back to you then, or?
We will, let's have you step, I'll find out, uh, I'll let you know who to email, send it to them. Um, we'll have to, we'll have to sign it and send our copy of like the last page, yeah. Yeah.
I, I just put ours in.
Yeah, we'll have to send that, so.
Then they'll put it all together.
I've got an email show is what we need to send, so I'll get it after the meeting, I'll get the right stuff, so. Okay, uh, next discussion. On the uh, resolution twenty eighteen dot twelve dot thirty-one regarding TIF revenue dispersment. That, you guys, Mark remembers, I'm sure, but you guys, you probably heard about it, was uh. Twenty, or not twenty, the uh, ordinance I was put in place and the resolution. Um, followed that, or with that ordinance, basically. Um, committing certain tax dollars, percentages of tax for TIF funds to certain places. Um, that resolution showed twenty, twenty percent for roads and bridges, twenty-five percent to certain other things.
Just divided four ways.
Yeah. Um, basically, what it does, it commits, it commits dollars.
Future.
Future dollars to certain things, but the problem is, is the, that number isn't enough. What are we gonna do with, where we come up with the money? Um, to me, I don't think we should commit certain percentages, we should be able to make that decision in this boardroom on what. The priorities are, where that money needs to go, you know, if, if the one oh five thing. Um, if we don't have enough money committed to that, then we still have to come up with money that we probably don't have, or if the courthouse is a discussion in the future. Same situation, we, we may even have a shortfall there and not be able to afford to build the courthouse, um, without going directly to taxation. So, my thought is, is to repeal the resolution and the ordinance. So that we, the board of supervisors can, can make that commitment and. And put the proper amount of money in the proper places from the TIF of any winter of drive there.
Thanks, I, I disagree though, but I think it gives us direction, it does kind of get us in categories, it kind of, kind of holds us a little bit of accountable to what we're spending. And where we're going with this money. I agree, we could end up with possible shortfalls, but we also have a lot of TIF projected for this county in the next five years, and uh. I got a pretty good feeling, there's more than plenty of money if we do things right. I think we need to prioritize and identify these projects, so we know, you know, how they're gonna fit into these categories. If you have a basically broad range, and we're deciding just what we're gonna do, we could be all on roads, or it could be all on. Whatever, but it kind of makes us focus and stay within some categories, I think it's a pretty good way, that's just my.
I guess listening to you guys. I. I like four categories, but I, I agree with AJ on the fact, though, that we do certain percentages. And like, the courthouse comes up, we might wanna take the whole works, put it on courthouse on that particular year. And we really couldn't do that the way it's set up right now, right?
Well, that's something, the assumption is not gonna be enough chip to cover those projects, even, you know, and it's, like I say, it's. And there's not gonna be TIF revenue every year per se, it's gonna, it's gonna come in blocks or chunks, and use, utilizing that. You know, maybe the first round, I would say the Deer Creek project is mainly used for roads and bridges. And if these other projects come online, we can identify the next project, you know, versus, you know, we have that ability to put it in, basically, we still have the ability, it's not. Forcing us, but it, you know, so that's split it four ways.
So that's a ballpark, those percentages, here's what we'd like to do, and here's what it was set up to do, but we can juggle it.
Uh, you know, within reason.
Within reason.
You have to kind of stay within the parameters, you know, whatever the percentage is, and I, I just think it's, it's. It holds us accountable. And uh, I, I don't have any problems, that's just my, so.
That's why the projects need to get identified, so that we know what, what the mix is and if it's good or not.
We have to figure that mix out, and that's gonna be, that's gonna be the hard part, because we all have wants, we all have, you know. And, and, and they're not just wants, there are, there's no doubt the roads, roads need to be taken care of, there's no doubt, something needs to be done with this building. You know, I think farther down the list, maybe some of those are more wants, you know, towards, towards the bottom of the categories, you know, possibly wants, but. You know, on the upper end with the roads and bridges and county. Structures, I mean, things like that, there's somewhat needs, and I think we just need to figure out how to do that properly, and, you know, we don't. Had a projection from Jeff on the Deer Creek project, I'm not exactly sure what it is, but, you know, looking at that, I think it's gonna probably play a bit of stuff. And we still have unused TIF funds, we could use it, we have to, from other, you know, older TIF funds too, but hopefully not. We can just do it with the new projects going forward, so.
Say to me, like I said, I'm afraid of is that just it restricts us, and I think, I think this board. Or any board is gonna do the right decision, make the right decisions, put the money in the right places, but I just, I got a feeling it's gonna restrict us and. Actually put us in just as much of a bind as it's gonna help us, because then we may have to come up with additional stuff.
And that's something that you can still do.
Right.
It's just, if we identified the projects and knew how everything was gonna shake out, then, then you guys could just, you know, would have more information. And be able to have a better.
We're doing everything on assumptions right now.
But I don't wanna see a big project out there not being done, because we got a percentage going into another project. And yet, we probably need the whole works to do this project, but that's too, we're not gonna jump that high, in other words, we're not gonna, if it's set up for twenty percent. Of the TIF funds, we're not gonna say, oh, that just changed, we're taking the whole hundred and doing it.
Right. I, I, yeah.
I, I just can't see money sitting there that's not getting used. Because we're scared, we're scared that we're gonna jump above the maximum percentage that we should use it.
Well, you guys got a lot of decisions coming up.
It's gonna be a crazy year, you've got a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, and we're gonna need guidance.
Right.
I was, I was talking to Chris Diggins already.
Okay.
Um, Bob Johnston's gonna have to, we're gonna have to talk with him, um, there's just, there's a lot of stuff. That's gonna, and Jeff too, there, there's a lot of stuff that's gonna have to be figured out, and what we can do, if we can do it, and. How soon we can do it, and all that good stuff. It's kind of overwhelming.
We just need more input earlier, so we know what, what's coming up on the table.
Well, and you're at the time now that, depending on when those turbines come online, you're at least a year out. From where that's gonna hit, so, and, and the first year, there isn't gonna be. That much.
Available.
Of it, so, I mean, there is time, but there isn't time, at the same time, it's kind of hard to, it, it's a lot to figure out.
Yeah, 'cause the first year's five percent.
Something like, yeah.
Something like that.
First year's zero.
First year's zero, the second year's five percent, and then it goes to ten, fifteen, twenty, I don't know.
Up to thirty percent.
Up to thirty minute levels off there, the rest of it. So even though they're coming online, we're not gonna get as much as now, as what we get six, seven years down the road.
Right.
So we need to know the exact number, how many are coming online, when they're coming online, and how much money is gonna be there.
Right.
Before we know what we can do on projects. And how that fits into what we already have, with projects and money sitting there, it, it's, it's all, you gotta put it all together. And it's a lot of fun.
Yeah, on the one side, I agree with Mark and the fact that we should have like four areas, because we have an idea of where we're going with this money, on the other side. I don't wanna sit there and go, oop, we don't wanna take the whole works for this project, because we built it out for these three other areas.
Correct, and we can, we can um. You can amend this resolution to keep them for, for topics there, but just don't put a percentage.
Don't put a percentage on it.
Or change the mix.
Yeah.
Or change the mix, yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't take it off the table, it's just something that.
Well.
Need more input.
Right, and to.
So, and you gotta remember, when we're looking at this, you know, you're looking at the life of the TIF, you're not looking at just the year the TIF starts either. So if you're, you know, if we spent five million dollars on roads, you take a look at that and say, okay, can we do that with the twenty-five percent? We wanna spend ten, fifteen million, whatever, five million, whatever fixes building up, whatever the decision gets to be on this building, you know, you take a look at that. You spread that out over the fifteen or twenty, whatever the TIF years are, you look at the total dollars of TIF, and how can we service that debt? How can TIF service that debt, is what you're looking at, and uh, that's what we have to figure out. Until we know the exact amounts, and we know the exact projects, I personally would just soon leave this alone, but that's not my final. I think right now Jeff's protecting about seventeen million in the Deer Creek project. Now, that was.
And I know that resolution's been in the back of your guys' heads ever since it was done.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's something that can be addressed.
Right, and those, I mean, that's, I think it needs to be amended. And we can leave those categories in there, and just take those percentages out, basically, to amend it, we have to repeal it. And bring in a new, approve the new with rewriting it as we see fit.
I think you can just amend it.
I, that's no care for.
I've got the process.
Resolutions are amenable.
I've seen ordinances that are amended too.
Yeah.
Right.
They're just making a change to it.
I think everything's amenable, within reason.
But is it, do you wanna do it tomorrow, or can we wait until we have the projects identified and kind of figure out what the pitch?
I think we need to get serious about identifying these projects, and, and then putting in them in priority list, I mean. That's what needs to be done. It's, otherwise, we could have a wish list a mile long, and then we're gonna have to truly identify it, so.
And that's why it's good that F V H is coming in, so that we can start figuring that one out, and, and Rich is working on the roads, so that he can figure that out. And it's that.
Those are no doubt the two main things that we're looking at, I mean, there's nothing else really big request that I've heard of, you know, I mean, there is, like I say. Everybody knows I've been on the trail committee and stuff for years, and it's, to me, it's a little bit of a dream list, I'd like to see it happen at some point, but. You know, I think we have to do the other things that are important right now, and that's the roads. Possibly something with this building, I don't know where that's gonna go, I think that needs to be decided, and uh, those are the two main things we need to focus on if we're gonna use any TIF dollars right now, so.
And that's again, the fine line between needs and wants.
Exactly, you know, I mean, I understand certain things do bring development and those kind of things, but we still have to define right now, and what's in the next probably. Three to five years, what we really need to identify and get, get to tackle. And then see what happens with other projects going forward, how we could utilize those dollars if they actually come to, come to, come to light, you know. There's no doubt that the new projects are gonna be four to five times what the Deer Creek project is, so. It's things to keep in mind.
It's, it's a good problem to have, but it, it's still. And it's gonna take some expertise and.
Like I say, when you said.
It's over our pay group.
Right. We just need to get, we need to, I'm pretty sure we need to get started on capturing this TIF here pretty quick, so. And I, I wasn't, I haven't been part of this before either, I've never had to do it, so. Just, you know, make a couple of calls this week and see what we need to do, try to, I can call Jeff, I got another person I should call. See where we need to go, and I don't, this, this is a just discussion here today, whether you guys wanna put it on for action next week, that's up to you, but uh. You know, my opinion is it needs to wait until we know where we're going, so.
Well, just run numbers in your head, seventeen million off that wind tunnel, total.
Roughly.
We could, at twenty-five percent, that better covers the one oh five project. You know, because if you're going, say it's twenty million, twenty-five percent, that's four million bucks, right? Or five million, five million, sorry, so, I mean, you're covering that, so what I'm just worried about is that we're not, we're not gonna be able to cover the things we need to cover. The things we need to get done. And then we're still gonna be, at the end of the day, is all of a sudden, is this project not gonna happen now, because, I mean, yeah, we've got partial funding, now we gotta go after it from somewhere else. But we don't have it anywhere else, that's the only way, the only place we're gonna get it done is if we have it here, that's what I'm afraid of. So, I might keep this topic on, um, I guess, and just a discussion on it again, but maybe.
Twenty-five percent of seventeen million is four point, almost four point three million.
That's, that's what's gonna be tall.
Right, and by having those, we're not even gonna be close, you know, going to, trying to build a facility, ten million dollars facility with five million bucks. Isn't gonna happen, and where do we get the rest from?
So, I think we gotta look at the long-term, bigger picture, half a billion dollars of projected wind and solar coming to this, possibly coming to this county. Do twenty-five percent of half a billion dollars.
That's a guess, and that's a projection too.
And how, how much money can you spend that you don't know, that you're not sure of?
You can't, I, I, I personally wouldn't at that point, I wanna make sure they're here, I want the projects need to be here, and you need to follow the steps after they come. Uh, you know, to, to borrow on a projected project, absolutely, I would not be in favor of that. You know, we have the Deer Creek project here right now, we need to, you know, look at how we're gonna utilize that to the best, the best we can, and. You know, taking all seventeen million and using that on the courthouse project, or on roads, I'm not sure, you know, what you would do. I mean, I think there's other things that can probably be done, you know, off this Deer Creek project, maybe it needs to be all roads this time or something, but then, you're right, then we need to. Have that ability, but I think those categories need to be left there.
We can't, the categories, I go along with the categories, it's the percentages that I own.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If there's a restriction on going, you know, from twenty saying, we're gonna take the whole works, well, we can't do that, because we have four categories. We need the whole works for the courthouse, that's what I'm against.
But backing out the whole resolution, I don't think is necessary.
I think we can make an amendment to it, to take out the percentages. I think we can make an amendment to it, to take out the percentages. But we can think about it too for a week if you want to, I don't know. We gotta first find out if we can make a, just make an amendment to it.
I think we need some solid numbers to, to give you an example of what, what it would do with that.
Right now, all we have is predictions. Even on the Deer Creek project, that's just a prediction right now, we don't know exactly what that's gonna be. It could be sixteen million, or it could be eighteen million, which I doubt it's gonna fudge a whole lot, but, cuz we know that, we pretty well knew the number of turbines when he, he started projecting this back last fall, so. And you haven't met, met Jeff Heil yet, and probably would be, I could say it a good idea to get him back up here and talk to us.
You saw that meeting though, didn't you?
I did see it, but
Haven't met him personally.
That was a good meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I learn something every time that Jeff comes around, but.
I just wanna be in a position where if they decide to do the courthouse, that we can, and we're caught up on the roads to somewhat, we're never gonna get caught up on roads. But we can sit there and go, hey, we're gonna take the whole works and put it against the courthouse.
Hopefully, we can get back to that point where the foreigner market funds are back where they, they need to be, and we get caught up a little bit on some of these roads and
But see, like they said, part of the problem is, we have a high percentage of hard surface roads in Worth County. It takes money to keep them up.
For the, yeah, the per capita and everything else.
Fifty thousand dollars a mile.
At least.
Yeah, we seem to be, yeah, ahead of a lot of others, and and good on one end, but on the other end, it's the maintaining that, is that a good thing to be, now what do we do? We still only get so many dollars from, from taxation to go towards those projects, so.
I think we oughta find out if we can make an amendment to the thing.
Jeff's still on vacation, I do, so otherwise, let's send him an email and see if he responds.
But then what is the sweet spot? What, what is the right percentage balance?
Take percentages out altogether. I'd have four categories, and try to work with those four categories, keep them up. But if there comes the time where the courthouse, again, you take the whole works, if those four categories don't need
Go to those four categories, and then on top of that, the board probably just needs to identify, okay, is roads more important, or is the building?
You know, we don't want our roads going to pot, and then there's a safety issue out there. Well, yeah, it's falling down. So I guess that's what I'm suggesting is, can we find out if we can just make an amendment to it, and if we can, take the percentages out? You guys agree with that, or?
That's what I would, but I, like I say, I think we need to kinda know a little closer to where we're at, and then, I mean, do the pro, whatever the process, it takes a little bit of time, so we have to do the process.
Is that kinda what you were after AJ, just take the percentages off?
I, yeah, well, yeah, I mean, we gotta, we can't commit certain numbers to certain things, I, I just don't think it's gonna be enough, and I, what I'm afraid of is that, okay, it's not gonna be enough, so obviously, those projects aren't gonna happen. So are we utilizing these TIF dollars to the best of our advantage? And by putting a percentage on it, I don't think we are. We're, we're, we might get ourselves in partway, we might get some done, some's better than nothing, I get it, but it's, it's just the fact that I don't, I don't think there's gonna be enough, because we don't, we do, yeah, we can speculate the future on this, this is done over here. We don't know what else is gonna happen over here. So, may or may not come, may or may not be TIF dollars, I mean, we can't look at the, too far ahead, because we don't know.
You can't bank on something that's not there, just an idea.
Pretty sure some of it's still probably gonna come, I talked to a guy the other day that said, I'm pretty sure, like for the solar part, I think all the, they've met, met with the utilities boards, and I think they're about done with that. I know the good thing is, the legislators are working on getting that solar thing fixed, so it will actually get the money instead of the state will, which would be a big plus. Right now, all solar money would go to the state, but I know Jane and the group down there have been working on it, so it'll basically be like the winter, but it's where the money will come back to the county, which is good.
And legislation is the thing that you can't always bet on either, that scares me too.
I thought we added EMS legislation going through last year, and we didn't, and that was way more of a shoe-in than anything else.
Well, and that's another possible project.
Could be, you could utilize something for that, you know, what do we need to do, so.
We need that solar money coming back to the counties.
Jane was pretty positive, hopefully that it was gonna get passed, I haven't talked to her in a couple, three weeks, but.
You know, she's having a forum on Saturday.
Yeah, might be a good point.
Cuz you know, they work together, but they still here, they work with different groups, so they, with the House thing, with the Senate thing, it's still the battle, so at least the, both of them there, you can get all sides of the story and what the groups are thinking, so. I guess I'd like to leave that on, on the agenda next week. Application for, uh, Suda manufacturing was not here this morning, so we will put that back on the agenda for next week as well. Might get it completed yet, so. When's he coming today? We, or did he give you the deed for?
He was, he is coming, for Stone.
Oh, okay.
And Melissa's supposed to have something.
She didn't get it. Yeah, leave that out for next week, also for Suda. Uh, road vacation, leave that on there for now. When was Betco? Melissa has anything to say, or if she's on or not. Well, she's been on travel this one, so I wasn't sure if she'd be on or not, but. Oh, yeah, I said that. That was, uh, didn't get here this morning, so. Uh, Jason, not on the
No, why do you think we're coming on that, as far as, you gotta get this stuff decided, I can just, just admit this.
Yeah, we've
Project or whatever.
So, but everything's been recorded, the deed going back should be our last step. Yeah, yeah, which, that, that'll just come along with it. Um, cuz we gotta meet up with them, just to figure the rates off of the people that are there, and then as people come on board, it'll work the same way, just do percentages. Like when Kamigal came on, they were just starting a percentage for a year or a year and a half, so figure out what they actually use. And then throw them into the overall percentage. Yeah, we need to do that.
And we'll have everything there with the streetlights, then?
Well, they're supposed to become sprint, right? Did we decide?
But would you have a price on it?
Yeah, he was getting, well, he was getting bids.
So that can be figured in the square footage.
And it's, it's a little similar to some he just did on another job, so it's got that just about figured out, so the price. We did get our, well, we paid our final bill to Hart for the power company. Only thing we have left to pay for, I believe, is just being able to street lighting coming in. Um, so, and that, that shouldn't make enough of difference on square footage, but a penny or two, because it's not a very, it's peanuts of what the whole project was, you know? Yeah. So, I mean, we should be able to just about start setting up, phrase great, so. I'll talk to them to see a little bit, I'm supposed to have lunch remaining this time, so. Uh, people's service, uh, we did get a email from them, they were inquiring about, um, renewing the contract for a year. Automatic, it's an automatic deal now, um, we still have to approve it and sign it, but um, I told them to go ahead and, and move forward and get that to us. Uh, cuz that would take effect, uh, January, or, or July first, July first, so. So they're gonna get something till shortly.
We got a sixty day window, so if, if there was anything going on, you'd have to let them know.
And I don't, as for now, I don't see a reason to change or do anything, that we've gotten a lot of issues ironed out. So. I think we're okay there for now. Department heads, called a nineteen policy, or anything else?
A lot up in the recorder's office, I guess.
It's just the way the boiler works.
Yeah, I've got a few things. The truck bids are the bids for the new vehicles, I got a call back, they can't even get to them until March, cuz Ford and Chevy are not releasing anything right now. Um, my main guy that I deal with talks about the chips in them, that there is a big shortage on them, he says, let's get this out, we need to lock in, because they can't guarantee the September. He said, so get locked in right away. I did send out the per capita, I called around all the other counties, I sent them out for you guys to look at, review. Um, we'll have to make some decisions on that at some point. We did get approached, um, we didn't get this, but Franklin County was looking to go on to a logger. Um, it's kinda hard to compete with Dallas County saying they can do it for free on there, when we're spending five thousand, so. Um, we lost that one, the last thing I have is jail inspection, should've got a sheet from a jail inspector that we did pass, he sent a letter to you. Um, we did pass a virtual inspection, so.
Here, let me put you in a speakerphone, Jeff. Okay, Jeff, you're on.
What kind of a resolution are we doing?
It's, it's the one regarding future TIF funds from, uh, renewable energy product, projects. Looking at amending that to, uh, eliminate the commitment of percentage, percentage, we still wanna stay in those four categories, but we're contemplating, uh, eliminating the percentages.
And there's an ordinance attached to that too.
Yeah.
I can send those to you.
I don't, I don't know why you can't amend the resolution, the, the more the more pressing issue would be whether or not you have to give notice ahead of time of what the amended resolution would be before you could approve it.
You don't need a public hearing to have a resolution, so. I don't know, Jeff.
Is, is the resolution for a public hearing?
No. It's just to be there, basically wanna amend, take, and take out the, right now, it's listed as a percentage, you know? Four categories with percentages. And so it limits the board supervisors a little bit on how they would address projects going forward with TIF funds. So. What we wanna do is keep the four categories and just eliminate the percentages.
And, and the, the resolution was posted to the, to the, uh, agenda for the day?
We're not gonna do it today, probably, but we're just making sure it'd be something we could do versus just totally backing off the resolution. And starting
Absolutely, that is, and again, my, my concern is more on, on the notice aspect of it, because, uh, an amended resolution is just the same as the new resolution.
Correct.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, and you always have the ability to do a resolution at any time, as long as it's been put on the notice.
So, but, yeah, so it'd be different than, like the ordinance, that takes a public hearing, so we probably have to actually take that to a public hearing if you're gonna amend the ordinance part of it. I would imagine.
I, I think so.
Yeah, thank you.
And, um, the, uh, deed to uh, Diamond Joe, uh, I have a telephone meeting with, uh, Rich and their Iowa attorney to make sure that, uh, the deed is, as I drafted, it is gonna work. So let's put it on the agenda for, for next Monday, and, uh, is, so we, just so we know, and we are doing something that isn't gonna meet their requirement.
Okay.
So, uh, and I, I will be gone, uh, I leave up for Vegas on Saturday. Uh, so I, I will be gone most of the week next week. And this week, we have a couple of jury trials, so I'll be out of the office Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. But either at the casino or at the, uh, at the courthouse doing the trials.
Okay, yeah, I guess if, if they, they give the all clear on that deed, then just get that back to us, and we can run it through on, uh, uh, next Monday then.
Yep, sounds good, thank you. Bye-bye.
Just to let you know, you are in charge of that phone.
I just learned that.
Just wait until you learn about all the others.
Just pick it up, answer it, and hit speaker.
Sometimes you have to dial phone numbers too.
So on the jail inspection, it was a virtual one, um, all he did was, we had to send in all of our records for the year, and all our training records and all that, we did get passed for another year. I did call Delbert, I think Mark is the only one of the three of you that have milk, met Delbert. With his talk, he said it's the same issues we've had in the past, I mean, we aren't up to code on stuff on a lot of things in there, but um, I did see if he would be willing to come up here and talk to you two and do another tour with you and show you what he looks like and what he sees in there, and he said he would, so.
Do that, I, I appreciate it, now you guys would appreciate a tour too, it's a, it's a little bit eye-opening, and, uh, we're, we're buying time, unfortunately, on that jail. It's hard to believe with the newest building in the county, as far as this infrastructure, that is probably the most obsolete.
And the bad part is remodeling, if you go in and take out one wall, you have to bring the whole thing up to code, everything.
You've been talking about replacing toilets if we do that, I mean.
We're not moving a wall.
Okay.
That's just a maintenance repair thing, so, but that's, the bad part of that is, you know, that's twenty grand, two years, that's gonna be forty some thousand to do that.
I know.
If we move forward, is then parts can be exchangeable to go over there, if there's forty thousand are thrown out the door.
You know what I mean, it's, yeah.
But you gotta do it, I mean.
Yeah, right. No, I agree, I just
My hair's short, so I can't pull it out. Yeah. No, I mean, I, I thought, just curious, so, okay. Yeah, no, if you could get him up here, that, I would, I think that'd be great. It's a, I mean, you've been through a little bit to jail, but
Yeah, Dan took me through and showed me a lot. Inspector guy had not been with that, with him or nothing, so.
It'd be cool if you could actually do a public tour that way, so people are aware, but we can't do it right now, it's just impossible.
That'll be all, that'd just be part of the education process that FEH is gonna work on. Educating the public on the situation of that.
Right. Oh, it sounded like a person from the public actually being on the tour.
No, 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 um.
I'm sure they know it, cuz when I talked with the Samuel group, they were very educated, knew the square footage and everything Iowa requires, I mean. If they're gonna design and engineer it, they've gotta have a lot of background in doing that because of all the code requirements.
And they did see the jails, so.
Right.
On our whirlwind tour.
Whirlwind tour.
All right, anything else, Dan?
No, the only other thing is, at the time when we discussed that per cap, then what we're gonna go out and do those meetings with the other towns, I did run statistics for them, I have that all ready to go to.
I, yeah, I guess we have to see what the community is, cuz this year's talking like the councils, the councils.
Yep.
You got them on there, council meetings most likely, if they'll let us, let us in.
Yeah, but I know the last time Mark and I went to everything in his district, and you and I, well Merlin then, just went to Grafton. We got fall coming up, that's the big one.
Yeah, I suppose we'll have to talk with them, and, or have that discussion ourselves first, and then discuss them too, so. Uh, keep those numbers working in your mind, I guess. We'll set something up here in the near future. Um, any other department heads? Anything else? All right, more appointments, um, so along with our Shell Rock Resolution, the twenty eight E. We need to appoint, uh, a person and an alternate. So, uh, I had talked with Jim Hanson, he's, would like to be involved with this.
Okay.
And it's a good idea to have conservation in on it, and it sounds like the Water and Soil District, or USDA building here is gonna somebody will be involved in that too.
Oh, from, okay.
I can't remember who Jim said, but
Or his wife.
Yeah, it sounds like they're gonna have, they're gonna have somebody involved in it too, on the board to participate too, so. I guess what we could do is put, um, Jim Hanson as the primary, and I would be the alternate. Which, for now, I think we're both kinda participate till get things rolling, and like I say, we're gonna have a first meeting with your bylaws and kinda do that, so we both will, will be involved, and may continue just to be involved, but if it does just paperwork process shows up, a primary and an alternate, so.
So we need to make a motion on that.
So that wasn't listed this time? Should, I put it on next week?
Yeah, better than. Not as an action item, you mean?
Not to rain on the parade, but.
Cuz it's just board of Board of Point Months.
Zoning Commission and zoning board of adjustment.
Yeah, you got a slash. Yeah, you got a slash, okay.
Yeah, that's fine, we'll run it through next week then. But that's, that's how we'll do it then, because that's, yeah, I said I talked with Jim and he was all for it, so.
Have you guys?
I have made a couple of contacts on the board of adjustment, I just haven't got any commitments yet, so. They're contemplating, so.
It's a big commitment.
About to ask, but I remember the last.
Try the young one, so it'll be on it for a long time.
Give it thirty years, right?
I think that's probably what Sonny had.
He's, that's covered, that was covered, right? The zoning commission's covered. Justin took Sonny's spot.
Yes. Yeah, that, or we still on shirt. That's the other.
Board of adjustments.
Board of adjustment that we need.
That is Martin Bradshaw, and now one just get filled.
Right. I think.
I got budget numbers in my head, I can't think about anything, any other things.
I did have a few things from my ISAC board meeting, I don't know if you guys want to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so we met last week, uh, Golden Eagle Award nominations are open. So if anybody, uh, it's, it's handed out once a year.
What is a golden eagle?
So the Golden Eagle is recognizing somebody that has done a lot for ISAC and/or NACO. So if there's somebody who can play it, um, kind of like Wayne Clinton, I think was one year, March Pitts was another year. Uh, NACO cybersecurity simulation is happening, that's just, I'm going to be participating in. Uh, the High Performance Leadership Academy, that was something that Kenny had gone through. Um, so I didn't know if that's something they're looking for participation. So.
I would like to, but personally.
It's, it's pretty good, I guess, Kenny really enjoyed it.
Um, Ryan from Sioux County really talked highly of it.
Yep, yep. Um, so that's something, if you guys want some more information, you can certainly throw out there. Um, settlement details are still being aired out for the opioid money, um, and how the money is going to be distributed. Uh, it's being mostly done, the AG's office, and then we do have a voice on that as well, since we are part of that. I don't know if Worth County was part of that or not, but we're not, okay.
Not, not an active.
We might grab some of that money just through, uh, some wellness, uh, or some, uh, therapy type clinics that might be set up for some of those lines around the area. I think what this, Mason City have any opioid, uh, clinics or addiction? So Prairie Ridge will probably get some money out of it, strictly. Uh, budget twenty twenty-two proposed, uh, that's going to go up this fall. Uh, no increase in county ISAC dues or conference registrations, we're looking at a fifteen dollar increase in ISAC university. County did, capital has been canceled for twenty twenty-one.
Virtually, right.
Well, that's canceled.
Gone, okay.
NACO Annual Conference is still going on, it'll be Austin, Texas, that is still in person.
When is that?
July sixteenth through the nineteen. It'll be warm, well. Yeah, hope the power.
Yeah.
I went the last time it was in Austin, we had a pretty good time. That's all I'm saying. Each county should receive CARES money that was left over from the first round. So there was a pot of money from the CARES Act that, that didn't get distributed the first time around, so that's being distributed to each county. Uh, Jake should be getting that.
We already got our full allotment, though.
This is on top of that. So there was counties that didn't take the full, their full allotment, and there was some that wasn't spent, so there was a pile after that. So Jake should be seeing.
Do you know what the breakdown or who's gonna?
They didn't have that information. You might want to check with Jake and see. And then there's additional Feds to me, some money probably going to heading, uh, directly to the counties instead of going through the state this time. So that's the federal proposals that are hitting right now, it's going to be county centric and not going through state. That's all hit.
Cool, thank you. I have an inside down there, I keep all that information up to date.
It is.
You know, it really is.
Information like that, but it's better to get it directly from the. Courses, you know.
They don't call me much, but everyone's.
Right. Supervisor Weekly, Eus.
I had a meeting Friday with Partners for Children. They did, they were going to do scoring on trauma-informed care and life skills. Uh, we did the scoring on the life skills, but, uh, we had to get more information on the trauma-informed care. So I've got another meeting tomorrow with them. And other than that, I've been doing the base camp stuff with ISAC.
Brain's probably on overload.
Yeah. Sometimes it's better just to dive right into it, keep going. You can always, it's there, so you can go back and actually.
It'll sink.
A lot of it's really, a lot of it's really good.
It is.
Yep, I just did one on taxation and levies and all that. Really good.
Retain, retain, retain.
Yep.
The more you're in it, the more it's.
Yeah, yep.
Just come back, yeah.
Mark?
I had nothing last week, I've already done the whole ISAC gamut, so.
I didn't have any last week either. Couple weeks, we got some more coming up, ten months.
Yeah.
We do, would like to discuss to, um, along with that resolution, that ordinance. Is that something that we need to look into, because that there is zone, three, three counties, or three townships in this county that are zoned. And that ordinance allows renewable energy products to avoid that zoning. And I don't entirely agree with that either. I mean, it shouldn't allow free pass, there should be something to it, especially if you have unfortunate county that's zoned and has been zoned. They all have to follow the rules, um, I believe they, that the, the renewable energy products should too. So with that, should there be an amendment to that ordinance as well?
Can amendment ordinance.
When we repeal the ordinance.
You'd have to repeal it, I believe, and then rewrite it.
Repeal the ordinance.
It sounded like that's what Jeff said in the.
And I sent both of those to him, so that he can guide.
And I, I do, there, there, there is a process, you would have to, um, yeah, you'd have to go through the same process to remove as you did to install.
Probably wouldn't hurt to have Jostin look at those, too, since he's our tip guru.
Right.
If, if he'd like me to send those his way, too.
I would.
And probably Biggins, too.
Yep.
Because, I mean, it just.
They're going to tie your hands.
Right. Right, but to me, I don't think it should be, be, uh, unfortunately, the rest of the county doesn't get the choice. But I don't think it should be a free-for-all that way. Especially when that stuff is already established beforehand, the zoning was already there. Yeah.
Yeah, the only reason is there is because interstate.
Yeah, so then there's the other kind of warrants for their de-zoning and all twelve townships.
Well, that's the thing, well, to me, meeting with, with Jeff Gorbol and Matt Duvey, and Matt has dealt with this over Winnebago County.
And they went to zoning for all county, or all townships, correct?
They have been, for years. But they had to follow the process. They weren't allowed just to come in and do it, they had to follow that process in the zoning, being, because it was their entire county, they'll have to follow it through the entire county. So, to me, with that, those three townships, that, that just eliminates them and lets them go wherever they want. They wouldn't have to follow the process that is, was put in place. Um, and that, those two guys do not agree with just the three townships being zoned, it should be an all or none. Luckily, that's never been, uh, an issue, but because it's, how is it fair to, you know, three quarters of the county and the quarter of the county, that's, these guys are zoned? Or why are we zoned and they're not, why are they zoned and we're not? You know, there's that conversation that go a hundred different directions. But to me, that, that ordinance clears all that. And I, I hadn't ever agreed with that the first day, and so I would like to see something changed there, my personal opinion. I don't live up there, it doesn't affect me, but I still get people calling me, questioning that stuff.
And you guys might want to revisit the whole.
I think there, there's a fair way, there is a fair way, I, I would, I believe there's a fair way for all the work. But as of right now, it's, I don't agree that it's fair.
As long as it's fair zoning, but if you're going to single out industries, then it's not fair. And that's, that's the whole gist of why this started, just to single out an industry. And I'll just put a fact that, I don't know if you were on the board, but the Cessar came in and wanted just a simple permit process if somebody wanted to build in the county, and people just blew up over that. They said, no way, and heck, do we want any of that, we don't, you know. And a lot of people saying, well, in the zoning, what they're telling me is it's just another damn level of government getting in the way of what we like to do.
But then why should?
I live in one of them townships, and I just, we're in the process right now of starting a building, and I had to get a building permit. Is it a big deal? No, it's not a big deal, but why should those three have to get building permits and the other ones don't?
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just telling you what people told me, so.
And besides, if you're in agriculture, you don't need a building permit anyway. If you're in the production of food according to that zoning laws out there, you do not need a building permit. If you're going to store your tractor and your combine. So they just don't.
There's always egg exemption to it.
Yep, there's always egg exemption to this stuff, they just haven't read the zoning laws before they complain about stuff.
I'm just telling them what they're saying.
Yeah.
Matt made that comment, he says, building permits in Winnebago County are ten bucks.
And you don't even have to charge.
No, you don't.
You just want to know what's out there.
Yeah, it's just a documentation thing, you don't have to charge a dollar amount, you can just, you know, but.
But then it'd be the enforcing of it, how, I mean, would there be a, would there be a penalty if they didn't?
You would have.
Yes, there's, it's, that's in there, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a huge thing.
The penalty was two hundred bucks. So you definitely want to spend the thirty and get the building permit.
Right, or it's going to cost you two hundred and thirty, because you're still going to have to get a permit.
There you go.
You know, so.
Well, and it's what, the bad part of it is, is if we have it or we don't have it, that could determine which way your elections go, and you're on the line.
Yeah.
I just think it should be the same for all twelve townships in the county. What's good for those three is it's still the same for the other nine. And I see where you're coming from, too, with the industrial part of it. What they're, you know, if you use reasonable zoning ordinances.
Yeah.
You can still have everything.
You can, you can lock yourself into a fight, if you want to see a prime example, go to Mason City. It's a fight, that's why you see more stuff going to Clear Lake, because they're a little more lax, they invite, they want to grow. And, but, yeah, something needs to be, I, I think needs to be addressed there at some point, be, um, soon. And just, like I say, it, how it all works out, I don't know, where the conversation starts and ends, I don't know that either.
Well, Maya Cog is where your zoning plan starts.
Well, there actually was a plan written for the whole county, I think at one time, it's just never been acted on.
Yep.
I don't know what the times.
Nineties, maybe.
I'm not so sure if they were made.
There's one that's even older than that.
Interstate, it was possible that it could have been projected for the whole county, but it was never acted. Just done on the center three, because it was mandated, but the interstate wasn't coming through unless they did it.
And they did that in nineteen seventy. And then in two thousand eight, when the casino went in, they redid the zoning and changed some things on it. That's when, in those three townships, you had, if you want to sell, you can sell like five acres, you had to sell a minimum of ten acres. Now, can you get variance to all this stuff? Yes, you can get variance on this stuff.
The board of adjustments.
And that's, but you have to come to the board, you know, the board of adjustment and possibly the supervisors. And that way, you know, basically zoning just tells people what they can do and what they can't do.
It's a guideline.
It's a guideline.
Jim Rice read all those when the casino was finally established.
And I think it was probably, it's probably a part of the deal with the casino is that if you didn't have something in place, then somebody could build direct competition next to them, and they weren't about that. They, they come in, they probably want to be the only ones there, which, you know, same with the, they agree, we just made them on that land they gave us. We don't want you building, or we don't want these types of buildings next to the casino, because it's competition, or it does not help their business.
That's why they set it up at ten acres, most people don't want to come in and buy a whole ten acres, when all they want to do is put up a building.
That's a lot of mowing.
Yeah, that's a lot of mowing.
It is.
Um, so when Winnebago zoned all twelve, or all of their townships, did they put in, um, any parameters for windmills, like setbacks and all that kind of stuff?
No, the objection is it's not enough, so you're never going to make people happy.
If you had a guidance, look at all the remote work from home that's going on, and all the people that are looking for acreages and may come out there. But nobody's going to go buy four or five acres to the two hundred fifty, sixty thousand, put a two hundred fifty to three hundred fifty thousand dollar house on it, and possibly a windmill goes a thousand feet out your back door in four to five years. They're just going to pick a different county, or, yeah, there you go.
I mean, a hog building that go across the street from us and there's nothing you can do about it.
But you can't get.
It has to be fifteen hundred feet.
Well, yeah.
You can't get so strict that you chase everything out of the county.
Yeah, you don't want to chase.
You've just got to get reasonable.
Right, but if you, if you follow the group that wants to change the zoning in Winnebago County, it's totally unreasonable. And that's the same push that's coming behind, the push for zoning in this county, it's an unreasonable. I'm not saying you, you're not, you don't have good ideas, that, there's no doubt about it, that it could happen. But it's, it's so unreasonable what's being talked about, that it's ridiculous. Everybody knows how this county's set up in sections, and if you do what they want to do, there won't be a tournament or a solar panel or anything built in this county. And we're just got done talking about using TIF revenue, and now we're talking about pushing them out of the county.
No, no, no.
I'm not for that. What I'm for is when they kind of a meeting down in Kansas and say that we've made a verbal commitment to Worth County to say sixteen hundred feet away from your residents, put it in writing, it's not in the contract, do exactly what they said they were going to do.
Yep.
Then you don't have anybody upset, you know, they're going to stay two hundred and seventy feet away from fence line, put it in writing, none of that stuff's in writing.
And I don't want to restrict nothing back, I don't want to stop growth or, or development, anything like that. But there's got, there's a fair line, there's a line there. And right now, either, either side, I don't think is near it, no, you know what I mean? So to me, it needs to be looked at and try to find that line and get as close to it as we can. Because the, the, the fifteen, sixteen hundred feet is just a suggestion by the developer, that, that's how far we're keeping from your house. And then stuff's going in at eleven hundred, nine hundred feet, that's not right. It shouldn't, there should be a line there that says it has to be this many feet away, and it should be fair. And, and at the end of the day, what would it have cost in, in this one? Two, three turbines?
Would have taken off three of them.
You're, you're not, you're not just losing the project, you're not doing that, you're still allowing the people with the land to do what they want with their land. But it's just making it a favor or favorable for everyone. And I say, is two, three, ten turbines going to kill us in the future? I wouldn't think so.
And if you could do a variance, the guy that signs his land up for it and says, hey, I'll move that thing within twelve hundred feet of my house, there comes your variance, move it closer to him than the guy that doesn't want it.
Yep. That's, that's just something I, I see is, is need to be looked at in real near future.
One thing, when you go into making, um, a ten dollar fine or a two hundred dollar fine or that, that's a civil thing. Be looking at the back end of that, of how much that's going to cost us if we get contested and have to go to court trials and that. Talk to your cities about abatements on what's happening with them and how much, Northwood would be a good one, because it does have a lot on the backside. A two hundred dollar fine gets really nothing when you're paying four, five thousand dollars supporting a civil litigation thing, so.
That was just, that happens to be what's in the zoning right now, if I read it right.
Yeah, it just.
I thought two hundred dollar fine was kind of.
But who's enforcing it?
Well, who's.
Well, at that, you know.
Should be a zoning administrator, should be pushing it and that, and they would have to probably, if there was a fight, you'd have to go through county attorney, I suppose. I don't know.
There's paperwork delivered, then there's, I mean, it's, look at the back end of that on that two hundred dollars as well thing.
There's a lot of buildings that have went out, you know, there, that aren't agricultural, that haven't had a permit, and they're just, you know, people aren't aware of it.
There's a lot of that.
I've talked to people in Danville, Tom, you know, it's own, it is. Yep, you're supposed to follow these rules, you know. So, there's a lot of people that don't know it, but like I say, it comes to that, it just, they're still, still got to, it just, they should, renewable energy should be held to the same standards as everybody else, first of all, because they should have to follow the process. It's not holding them out, it's not kicking them out, it's just giving them some guideline to go by, too. It's not holding them out. It's not kicking them out. It's just giving them some guideline to go by too. If everybody else is expected to do it, they should be, they should be as well.
Well, it says in here, you know, that. The ordinance exempts them from any futures county zoning restrictions. When you're writing a twenty year contract that can be renewable for another twenty, you're talking about forty years. That's a long time out there. And we're going to grandfather them in anyway. We're not going to do anything to them, but if somebody wants to come back into that same area. With the same company and put windmills in, I would think they'd have to go along with the zoning. It's there to protect the citizens. It's there for the citizens to know, here's what I can do, here's what I can't do, here's my protection. If I want that thing closer to my residence, I can get a variance on it and we can move it closer to my residence.
Oh, they can do that now.
Right.
And that's why most of them haven't been done.
But there's nothing in writing.
Yeah, there's nothing in writing now that says that. So they can do the same things that they've done other places. We can suggest that we're going to put it here, but it can go. Closer and nothing can be done about it.
And they can change.
For farm, you have an agreement on certain things for drainage and for roads. So would we, you know, Rich, Rich was talking about the wear and tear on one oh five. Would any, would. Is, will there be a determination if any of that was their damage?
I don't know, but I guess that's, Rich would be still on there, but Russell's on there. See, but yeah, I don't.
I'm not sure.
I don't know if we identified specific areas. I don't think we did. I think it was just for the project. So yeah, because there would have been, I mean, take a look at the road from Corey, you can take a look.
So I thought there was a route.
Yeah, they were supposed to.
Well, they had routes that they were going to suggest and they were going to try to stick to these, but that did change and Rich did get on about it. They were using roads that they didn't plan on using and he. Wanted to make sure we got compensated for that stuff. I do know that because they're saying we're gonna stick with this and this and all of a sudden they moved over a mile and running this instead. That wasn't part of the deal and Rich went after him and he did get him to pay more, I know. What, if we've seen that yet or not, I, I don't know how it all worked out, but. So. Anyways, that, that's my thought. Is. I think we need to try to look at finding that line of fairness throughout the county for both sides. But.
And then change it from just three townships to twelve townships.
Well, you have to change it. You're gonna have to redo the whole thing. You'll have to start, you'll start over and do the whole county. I mean, you'll have a, you'll have a template, I guess.
And that's probably what you should do. We should look at all this. Aren't you supposed to look at these zoning deals every five years? That's what I'm doing.
I'd have to read.
One of these classes that I just took. It's the supervisor's responsibility to look at all your zoning every five years.
You have lots of responsibility.
There's something else we're supposed, I got it written down.
I think it's the actual ordinance, code of ordinance is we have to.
Yeah, well, yes, that's what it is.
I just, just read that.
We're supposed to, and this would be, this is probably the year I think you're supposed to be reviewing.
Oh, we proud of the.
For some reason, I go on right before.
Go through, review, review them.
Is it how many, is it five years?
It's five years.
How, how many years the supervisors here or just every five years?
Every five years.
Because I think it might have been done kind of before I got on or something.
That's, that's our ordinance book in general to make sure that.
More than that.
It's been done once since I've been here and I've been here eight.
So then it was done, yeah, so.
Who did you say did the zoning back in?
Jim Rice.
Uh, so he was zoning administrator for a year, year and a half, two years.
Yeah, one, two years.
Didn't he do both counties?
And that's probably more than Matt signed up for.
Maybe. I don't remember that, but I know he, when the casino zoning came in, he was part of that and then.
Oh.
We have some zoning for Mason City Airport as well that he, that he booked in place. Because Mason City Aerospace does go in the work count.
Let's get into that.
Right. Up to David lawyers, I think.
Yep.
At least.
Is it?
Probably like highway nine.
And over that a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, because when we're flying drones and stuff, we do hit into that, that airspace.
Yeah, you would have been in that probably.
And I know as far as countywide zoning, um, I believe that is a ballot issue. I'll double check that for sure, but I think it's a ballot issue.
Could spend some months since it's happened. Was it voted on in seventy-two, three?
I don't ever remember voting on it.
I mean, you would have, it would have been in your.
It would have been in my township and I don't ever remember voting on that.
And I could be wrong, but I thought.
Maybe countywide zoning.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm talking, countywide.
Well, even, even so, it should have, if, even if it's in three townships, you should get them.
There would have at least been a public hearing on it, I would have thought. Where you would have had a chance to come in and voice your opinion of it.
Right. I would think there'd been a public hearing on it.
That'd be going back in minutes and stuff like that. And if I had time, I would.
Forever. We're not asking.
Your little.
No, no.
I mean, back in two thousand five or, or two thousand six or two thousand eight or whenever it was the book we have now. Yeah.
The current book.
Yeah. That actually was adopted. Cause I, I, you could probably isolate that timeframe and at least look through. See what happened.
All that stuff was scanned, so.
And it might even, something might even be in that file cabinet. I'm not sure.
All from those zones, yeah, possible. So. I don't know, it was my township and I, but the seventies, I was only ten years old or whatever, so.
I wasn't here. I wasn't here and I definitely wasn't in Worth County.
Uh, excuse me, Mark Timlison just reminded me, he had to get off the call. Um, there was a discussion apparently about placing some cameras. Over at Public Health with some of the issues that had, well, the Minnesota event. Some of the clinic up there, there was an active shooting in Buffalo.
Oh, got it.
Really?
Cassup County also had a little bit of a threat that was called in over there. So Mark and I and Teresa sat down, or not Teresa.
Jesse.
Jesse sat down and we talked about a few things to make it a little safer. And one of the ideas was to put cameras in the. Entry ways on both where they're doing the shots and on public health. So we would have visual over here in case something happened. The other is. They're lighting up their radios, which do have emergency buttons on them so they can send an emergency tone. Our people have been identified. If that tone goes off, where they gotta go is right to Public Health.
How does that plan to HIPAA or anything?
As long as you're not in a ER room or something like that, there is nothing to do with HIPAA. You look at how many cameras are in all these shot places right now that are taking pictures of that. There's no HIPAA to that.
It's just in the public area.
Those are doing the right thing. Yeah, I would say that would be a good idea.
So I reached out to a vendor that has done our current camera system and adding additional to that. So just let you guys know.
It doesn't have to be a standalone. It can hook in.
Uh, it's best just to, to add on to what we have right now.
Yeah.
We, we built that system with some capacity to do that.
Probably good. I mean, it's not going to stop. It's going to continue on probably through midsummer before, if not longer, before that clinic actually slows down again. Um, you know, you know, you're guaranteed that, you know, so it's probably a good idea. They are.
Well, in a, in a remote, you know, a remote facility like that, I think is a good idea to have some sort of, some sort of camera system anyway, so.
Sure. Not only pre that, but if we did have an event for post event.
Do you monitor close nowadays or get a shot?
It's monitor, we have the treasurer's office right now. If they're open during the weekday, it's pulled up in my back room with thirty other cameras. So we monitor back there. During the weekday, I have all the cameras pulled up and I can pretty much tell you any movement on cameras. I'll tell you what's going on. Right, Joe?
Yes, sir. You can.
Cause. Wherever we do have cameras, I mean, we are limited over here on some, but that's.
Is there really, is there nothing in front?
No.
Is that what the deal is?
Well, we can't catch this corner, but we have our power cam. I'm talking more inside.
Lighting in front is crappy too.
Yep. We, we don't have anything right now externally covering the south side of the building or the east side of the building.
And those steps. Probably be good to have something on these steps.
Yeah, okay, some trips, slips and falls.
You can get some of that with the power cam.
If the camera, tower cams point in that direction.
Right.
Yeah.
That's believable.
Yeah, yeah. It's pointing up, pivot and zoom.
That's another thing, a new building, you'd fix a lot of that stuff.
Well, you build it, put it in instead of adding it on.
You build your system to, you build your system to it. It'd be wired in and it'd be good for future. Even if your cameras went out of date in ten or fifteen years, you, you're still wired in. You could just replace components and not have to try to.
Well, and I'm just saying like the liability spots that we have, like those front steps and stuff like that, that would fix the need to even have a camera.
Um, all right, I'll do a little more homework on that. Ordinance, I guess, on the process or whatever, and I'll check on the zoning process if that was to become how that process would even go. And we can just discuss it a little more next week or whatever.
I know if they have to form a new board, at least one name that said they'd be willing to sit on there.
Boarder.
Like, are to do zoning, change zoning, you know, whatever they, they would like.
Somebody called me to an offer to be on that thing.
Yep.
I think the, the want and need on both sides is out there. Um, if people are willing and that's what, that's a good thing, but we just.
And that's a lot for you guys to take on all at once, the, the TIF and the zoning.
The zoning would be turned over to a committee personally, and I don't know if one of us would probably want to serve on that committee and at that time one of us would be appointed to it.
I would think we'd definitely. I would definitely think one of us should be, should be on it.
Right, right.
So. I think it's something that should definitely get looked at.
Yes, I agree. I agree a hundred percent. Um, future items. We have a, or there is a legislative forum Saturday.
Yeah, I found out about that yesterday.
Yep, me too. It kind of came up quick, but would you please post that case?
I had, but I thought it was Friday.
Yeah, I caught, I caught that.
I think I'm just gonna.
Yeah, take a Sharpie down there.
Yeah.
So this way if, if more than one of us attend, um, and feel free if you want to.
We want to get our solar money back.
It's gonna, yeah, it's gonna be the only one in the county. They used to do one in Northwood and one in Manly, um, but.
Jane got you on her mailing list yet?
Uh, not yet, but I.
Yeah.
I know how to get on it.
Yep. Jane and Waylon are a representation down there, so we gotta stay in good, good contact with them.
I've got some other questions for her too, so.
He's always willing to talk.
She, she responds usually too within a couple days.
I got some questions on backfill taxes.
Um, so other than that, yeah, we've got a meeting Friday. We'll be at. Over in Forest City. First, yeah, Friday, legislative forum Saturday. Okay, nothing else, then I'll take it most to adjourn.
So moved.
Just there a second.
I'll second it.
I'll pay right.
All right.
All right. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.